Hello. The League of Women Voters White Bear Lake area welcomes you to this virtual forum for our candidates running for North Oaks City Council in a special election for a two-year term, to fill out a two-year term. This forum is not open to the public and is not being livestreamed. The reason for that is to ensure minimal chance of cable interruption. It is being recorded and will be posted on our YouTube channel. In addition, local cable stations will replay this forum on a schedule determined by their station. Candidates, if for some reason your internet connection is lost, please call in using your phone. I'm Liz Nordling, and I do not live in North Oaks, and I'll be moderating this forum. The League of Women Voters is a trusted, longtime, nonpartisan volunteer organization that encourages citizens to participate in government. Our mission is to support voter education and voters' rights. While the League studies and takes positions on issues, we do not support or oppose any candidate or any political party. The goal of our forums is for voters to learn more about the positions of the candidates who will be on the ballot on November 3rd. All candidates for this race were invited to this forum. Our candidates are Jim Hera and Nick Sandell. There is a third candidate, Jason Tremir, who did not respond to our invitation. Candidates will be giving their opening statements in alphabetical order. After that, the beginning speaker will be rotated with each question, and then closing statements will be in reverse alphabetical order. A timer will show when there's 15 seconds left and when to stop. So we'll now begin with opening statements, and we will start with Jim Hera.
I want to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this event. It's a great way to meet candidates. I'm Jim Hera, and I'm running for the North Oaks City Council. My wife Theresa and I have lived here for 30 years. My parents, children, and grandchildren also live here. Having spent countless hours in our recreation areas coaching our kids' teams and exploring nearly every trail, we feel extremely fortunate to live in the crown jewel of communities. I serve on the North Oaks Planning Commission, through which I've gained a deep understanding of our governing documents, key processes, as well as see the ways I can help serve North Oaks, which is why I'm running for council. In the discussion tonight, you'll see firsthand my straightforward approach to issues, pragmatism, and common sense solution style. You'll get a sense of my appreciation for the people of this community, the natural resources that define it, and the complexities that make it special. My goal is to demonstrate how I lead North Oaks in thoughtful and civil discussions, inclusive governance, and apply my financial acumen to create a fiscally conservative approach to budgeting. I look forward to exploring various issues tonight and discussing them with you more personally between now and the election. Thank you.
Thank you. Now with this opening statement is Nick Sandell.
Great, thank you. First, I'd like to thank you, I'd like to say a thank you to the League of Women's Voters for hosting this forum, as well as a thank you to all the residents who are watching and have committed their time and interest in the future of our community. As a prospective council member, I understand the responsibility that comes with this position, and I pledge to carry out that responsibility with diligence and transparency. My wife Jenny and I have been thrilled to call North Oaks home, and the city has offered an ideal setting to raise our two young boys, Noah and Aiden. That said, I understand that a positive community is not developed without hard work from its residents, and my desire to run for office is do my part in contributing to the city's overall well-being and ensure its ongoing success. My current role as a North Oaks Planning Commissioner, and previously my role as a Planning Commissioner for the city of Little Canada, have demonstrated my commitment to the community and provided invaluable knowledge of the city, its residents, and its values. I look forward to discussing these thoughts further this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now turn to questions. Questions were solicited from the public at our League email, and the first question goes to you first, Nick. What is your understanding of the intent and rules of the open meeting law? Do you agree to abide by it?
Thank you, yeah. First of all, yes, I do agree to abide by open meeting law, and I think that open meeting law is one of the best ways for our local government to be transparent with our community. I interpret open meeting law to understand that any time that there's a quorum of any of the governing body, that conversations and discussions must be open to the public. And one of the reasons that, one of the primary reasons that open meeting law is so important is that it allows residents to understand not only what gets decided by its representatives, but the why behind those, how those decisions get made. It represents the differing views, the differing opinions, and the different facts that are incorporated in going into those decisions. So yes, I do support open meeting law. I am very intentional to participate in that. I think it is a huge benefit to our community, and I think that it helps the community to understand how decisions are made by its governing body. Thank you.
Thank you. The question goes to Jim Hera.
Yes, the open meeting laws, they essentially ensure the public's right to access all the internal workings of government at all levels. And to echo what Nick said, it's an effort to be transparent to the public so that they're aware of what the process is and the discussion is behind the meetings that shape and deliver policy. It's been a law, to my knowledge, for quite some time, and I think it's a law across the country, and I believe it was initially instituted to get backroom dealings and some of the private meetings out in the open so that the public understands and has input to what is being decided in the community in terms of their governance.
Thank you. I'm now going to offer each of the candidates a chance for a rebuttal. So if you have any additional comments, if you would indicate that you have that, I will call on you. Does anyone have any additional comments?
I'll just add that, you know, a big component of why I'm running is transparency to the community and ensuring that the community understands how decisions get made. And so I think open meeting law is a very important component to that, so that residents can understand the how as to how decision, understand the why as to why decisions are made, and the background that went into that decision-making.
Thank you. Do you have any additional comments, Jim?
I don't. Maybe one quick thing. I do think it's important in that, that the citizens of the community are given timely information on any meeting so that they have a chance to, one, attend or tune in as it be right now, and also to do some research on what the topics might be.
Thank you. We'll move on to the next question. It goes to you first, Jim. How do you think citizen comments should be incorporated into city council meetings?
Okay, an area that I feel that we can vastly improve what we are currently experiencing, and I think if you look at some of the candidate position statements, I think we all echo somewhat of the same feeling on that, and that is the current council is not as welcoming as what they need to be on citizen comments. Citizen comments shape and should shape what we are making policy on. I do believe that items that are on an agenda for a particular meeting ought to be able to be discussed in that evening's meeting. I think there should be an allocated timeframe at the beginning of the meeting so citizens can voice their thoughts, and I think there should also be some time at the end of the meeting for rebuttal after the citizens have had a chance to hear what the council people and other people that are testifying or giving information at the meeting. I think the present council is not as inviting as what they need to be and are not as respectful as they need to be, and I think very important in the citizen comments is not that you're just allowed to make a comment, but that they're actually heard, and I would encourage council people to maybe even ask questions to get deeper into what some of the citizen concerns are.
Thank you. The question goes to Nick Sandell.
A characteristic of all great cities is that they listen to their residents, and any opportunity for the council to hear from residents from the community is a positive. So I am supportive that residents have the opportunity within council meetings to provide comment and are given the opportunity for their voice to be heard by the council, by the staff, and by all the other residents that are attending the meeting or participating in the meeting. I think that it's really important that we ensure that that is a safe space for people to feel comfortable and welcoming in providing those comments. I also think that we need to make sure that we set expectations as to what action is going to come out of those comments at a council meeting, and the rationale behind that is that the council, the experts that the council relies on, want to ensure that they have the opportunity to provide a very respectful response and a response that gives very good thought to those ideas. So I am very supportive of the, of individuals and residents having the opportunity to speak at council meetings and have their voice heard, and I think that we should incorporate a very strong process for follow-up so that residents feel comfortable that their voices were heard and that a diligent response was given to their thoughts.
Thank you. Do you have any additional comments, Jim?
I do not.
All right, then, we're going to move on to the next question, and it goes to Nick first. What is your position on a home maintenance ordinance?
A home maintenance ordinance is a very important topic here in the city, and I think it's an important topic in any city, and it's a topic that needs to have great thought and great balance to it. Any city needs to ensure that it has a maintenance policy to ensure both the safety of the community and ensure that all homeowners contribute to the property values and the value of the entire community as a whole. That being said, it needs to be done with great balance so that it's, ensure that it's respectful and fair to all residents. So I would be in favor of a maintenance policy, but I would want it to be under a very balanced approach. I think it could be started with a approach that first addresses safety concerns for both the residents of those properties and for other citizens in the community, and then we could look to explore ways that we can take a very balanced and tailored and respectful approach to other components of a maintenance policy to ensure that we respect the home values of all of the residents in North Oaks.
Thank you. The question goes to Jim Hera.
The home maintenance ordinance, I believe this is an item that needs significant input from the community. I certainly see both sides of it. We live in one of the nicest communities in the metropolitan area. Home values are very important to all people there, and I think if you're in a neighborhood where you see a lack of home maintenance, and some of those are very visible, some are not as visible, I think that can be a frustration and perhaps drive down property values. At the same time, I do see a need for a balanced approach to looking at it in their aspect that, that some of the people that live in North Oaks are elderly, and they may not have the same capabilities to do some of the things that others would think. I think there also is a fair amount of subjectivity to looking at a house and trying to determine what is a item that needs to be corrected, and I think that has to be carefully vetted out within the community and that. We do have currently several ordinances that are in place that protect communities and neighborhoods from having things parked in driveways that shouldn't be parked there and some of the things that could detract from a neighborhood. I do believe that this would, this would be something I throw to discussion in the community, and want to get more input before, it would be positively safe. We need a home maintenance, and then it's got to be very carefully drafted so it's not oppressive.
Thank you. Do you have any additional comments, Nick?
No, I don't. Thank you.
And we'll move on to the next question, and it goes first to Jim. What does transparency in public office mean to you? How would you improve transparency at the council level?
Transparency, well, let's go back to our open meeting laws. I mean, I think first and foremost, decisions that are made on behalf of the community, city business that do involve the people that are making the decisions, need to be in a public forum, and I think the information needs to be disseminated to the public well in advance so that there is ample time to make, make comments and study it, and I think that the individuals that are, should be given an opportunity to address the council people and get their points heard. The transparent part of it is that there is no behind-the-scenes dealings there. I think that it all has to be out front, and I think that a citizen deserves to understand the process by which a decision ultimately gets made, and I think there's going to be moments when you might have citizens that have different views on something, and I think it's important that the council is transparent in how they come to their ultimate decision so both parties feel that they've had an opportunity to respectfully weigh in and be heard.
Thank you. The question goes to Nick Sandell.
You know, as elected officials, we represent the interests of our residents, and they have the right to know what actions we take and have the right to hold us accountable. In my time certainly on the Planning Commission and my efforts going through the process of the campaign for city council, I have spent, I really focused my energy on ensuring that everything that I do is transparent and also supporting the rationale as to why I'm taking the action that I am and why I have the position that I do. So I think transparency is a extremely component, important component of public office and is a part of the definition of what it actually means. I think one of the key elements that we can do to improve the transparency with our community is make sure everyone understands a very consistent, methodical approach and process as to how we conduct our business, and then we, as representatives, make sure that we follow that approach and that we ensure that we trust how that process works. And that doesn't, you know, that will hold us as representatives accountable and will ensure that we hold all of the other members of the staff that work for the city and contribute to those processes. It'll make sure that everyone is held accountable to a consistent process that residents can rely on so that they know how business is conducted in our community.
Thank you. Any additional comments?
I would make, I would make one. One of the things I've noticed is that sometimes meetings are called, and the amount of time between when a meeting is called and when it actually occurs is short, and I would encourage that we would allow the proper amount of time and also share the, any materials that are needed to make a decision for a citizen to make a comment on that ahead of time so they have the same knowledge, same knowledge and same opportunity to review things as, as we do.
Thank you. Any additional comments, Nick?
I think it's important that we are very transparent with the community and make them aware and provide ample time so that people have the opportunity to look into their thoughts. I do like that as the city has to react to different situations and has to be flexible, that any time that we feel like we as a, as a, as a city need to get together and make a decision, that we do do it in front of, in an open meeting, and do do it in front of the public. So I think it's very important that when we have to act quickly as a city council, that we are doing those in those transparent, open meetings.
Thank you. We'll move on to the next question. It goes to you first, Nick. Explain how collaboration and cooperation fit into the work of the council.
Well, collaboration and cooperation fits into the work of any council. By definition, it supports exactly what a council's main goals are. Then the city of North Oaks, it's so much more unique because not only as a city council do we have to collaborate internally, but we have two other entities that have a very vested interest in how we make decisions with the North Oaks Homeowners Association and the North Oaks Company. And the reality is each one of those entities plays a different role in how North Oaks operates and the history of North Oaks, but they all have a collective purpose, and that's for the prosperous and for the benefit of a, of a strong community. So from my perspective, I think collaboration is one of the most important elements of what the city council can do. One, so that we all as city council members bring our own unique perspectives to the, to the conversation and then collaborate and meld all of those different perspectives together and make decisions based off of the responsibilities that we have as a council. And then two, allows us to then engage with those other governing bodies that really represent all of the public services to North Oaks and really again, realize that we are all working towards a common goal, and we all just have a different responsibility to get to that goal.
Thank you. The question goes to Jim Hera.
I would also agree. We do have a unique circumstance here where we've got Noah that handles roads and lands and our city, which handles city administrative offices. So there needs to be a close collaboration with that. They both have large budgets that are somewhat different focused, but there is a little bit of overlap, and I think cooperation, collaboration is vital to making that money spent as wisely as possible. We also have other bodies within the city. We've got the Natural Resource Commission, which I think is a very underutilized commission that is here to support the decision-making that goes on in the government, and so much of our community is wrapped up in our ecological resources here, and I think sometimes we fail to recognize that we have experts that are vested in the community here and that we can bounce ideas off. So I would include them in the process, and I think the, any good decision is a result of shared ideals, ideals, shared visions, and perhaps debates on what is the best direction to go, and I think that any decision that has stakeholders and the stakeholders are vested in the decision and feel like they've been heard is a good decision.
Thank you. Any additional comments, Nick?
No, I have no, nothing. Thank you.
And we will move on to the next question, and it goes to Jim first. Given the concerns of some residents, if elected, would you favor reversing the current council's approval of the Nord Parcel preliminary plan?
Um, and a short answer, I think yes, and the reasoning for that is this. When this came before the Planning Commission, the, we received numerous citizen comments, and they were all against the plan. These are primarily neighboring people there, and part of the issue with that is, is there is a PDA 1999 document that was agreed to by Noah, the city, and the developer, and that's our defining document for developments. Since that time, there have been a number of amendments to it that in some ways have muddied the waters. So the Nord Parcel in particular was set up in the PDA for, I believe, nine households there, and they were toward joining parcels that were not part of that housing area. And if you look at a map that was in the 1999 PDA that defines trails, those parcels were designated to have a future trail on those. I went out to the site, walked the site, I went and walked the trail, and then visited with neighbors in the surrounding area and have walked the trail, proposed trail with one of them. I got their immediate feedback because they live in that area, and they were not in favor, and I could see why. We took a step backwards in the trail, and I believe that, that proposal was pushed through for the purpose of gaining a higher density, and I don't think we did the right thing there. We also have an impact on wetlands that I think is not right.
Thank you. The question goes to Nick Sandell.
I, I did also have the opportunity to visit the Nord Parcel, to the site, the trails. And the short answer is no, I do not favor reversing the Nord Parcel plan, and as a Planning Commissioner, I feel that I had firsthand experience on the work and the analysis that was put in, into that plan, and I ultimately think that it will be a great addition to our city. So specific to the work and analysis, I felt that the team of experts that contributed to that, including the Planning Commission, including our city planner, our city engineer, our city administrator, our city attorney as related to analyzing and interpreting the plan, the development agreement, all demonstrated their expert-level knowledge in each one of their various fields, and as a Planning Commissioner, I thought that they did a fantastic job of relating the facts to the commission and relaying the compliance components to it. So I feel that the plan was gone, went under great analysis, it had a lot of good conversation to ensure that it met the needs of the residents, to make sure that it met the compliance needs of the development agreement, and I think that ultimately, at the end of the day, it will be a great asset to our community, and I suspect it will have great demand for attracting wonderful new residents to North Oaks.
Thank you. Any additional comments, Jim?
Yeah, I do have additional comments. The, the plan that was presented had numerous non-compliant components to it, and to Nick's point, I think the city worked around these compliance. In fact, the city attorney even said that the non, the orphan parcels, as they were called, were not part of it and rendered the whole development non-compliant, therefore went forward with it. On a follow-up note, I've walked that facility or area since that time, and the path that they have carved out for the road is almost 150 feet wide for a 20-foot road, so we lost a lot of forest.
Thank you. Any additional comments, Nick?
I think it's just important to understand that the city attorney ultimately did agree with the proposal and did not make a recommendation to deny. Their interpretation was that it did meet the compliance needs, and they did make a recommendation to approve, along with all of the other consultants of North Oaks, and they demonstrated their expertise in each one of their various fields, and made myself as a Planning Commissioner very comfortable with going through that analysis and making a recommendation to approve it.
Thank you. We'll move on to the next question. It goes to you first, Nick. How would you describe the relationship between the city and the North Oaks Company? Is the relationship transparent?
So I think that I'm uniquely positioned to this question, being a, having the experience of being a Planning Commissioner in another city. I was previous, prior to moving to North Oaks, I was a Planning Commissioner in the city of Little Canada, and had the opportunity to work with many developers on many residential and commercial developments, and when I came to North Oaks, I was very surprised as to the relationship between the city and the North Oaks Company, and I really had to spend some time ensuring that I educated myself on the history of the company and the history of its role within the city. So after I've come, you know, after going through that, you know, research and analysis, I've come to say that I think that the North Oaks Company is a great partner to the community, and from my experience in other cities, I think that we need to recognize that while we both come from different perspectives, we really do share a common goal. I think that the information that is shared between the city and the company is very transparent, and I think that the company has done a very nice job of both, not only incorporating the council and incorporating the Planning Commission, but also incorporating the community into all of its decisions. They've done a very nice job of hosting events and interacting in person with the community to make sure that everyone understands what the intentions of the company are, and really to understand that we all are going for the same goals of developing very, in a very respectful and responsible way, the remaining elements of North Oaks.
Thank you. The question goes to Jim Hera.
Um, the, my thought in watching the meetings, that I think there are elements of city as well as city administrative staff that I believe are very pro-developer. I've lived in this community for 30 years. I've seen a little bit of a change in the North Oaks Company's development criteria. If you look back many years, the developments, which I purchased a lot in, were more of the type of Red Forest Way, large lots with a respect for the environment and also a respect to add trails and recreation areas. I think some of the more current developments, there's been more of a focus on density, and I don't think that we're, we're, in fact, I think this, the company has said that they feel like they have, have met all of their recreation commitments for the rest of the development, and I don't know that that's the spirit that Louis Hill intended back in the day when this first kind of a pioneering type of community was set forth. So I, I guess I would disagree a little bit with Nick on this one.
Thank you. Nick, do you have any additional comments?
Yeah, I think that, I think that there, there doesn't need to be a situation where somebody has to identify themselves as either pro-company or pro-city. Those are not mutually exclusive things to our community. If anything, I think that we're uniquely positioned, we're uniquely positioned in the sense that we can have, have it both ways, where we have a developer that is committed to the same values that our city is. We're fortunate to have a developer that has the same family heritage and represents the Hill family that established our community and established the values that most of our residents want. So I think we have a unique position to have a win-win scenario here where we can be pro-city and respect the company as well as a very strong partner.
Thank you. Additional comments, Jim?
Uh, yeah, again, I think that if you look back in the history of North Oaks and the development criteria and the care that was put forth in, in, I think, a measured development, it seems like we're in a bigger, a bit of a rush now to get the rest of these development areas done, and I don't think it's, needs to be rushed. I think we should take the same care that we did before and make sure that all the citizen comments are heard and that we do this properly in the same spirit that North Oaks was originally devised to be.
Thank you. We'll move on to the next question. It goes to you first, Jim. What have you done or will you do to support development and increase the tax base in North Oaks?
Well, I bought a, I bought a nice house, so I feel like I've done my part in increasing the tax base there. The tax base, I mean, the, the PDA- the tax base there. The tax base, I mean, the, the PDA has, I think we have 174 houses yet to be, or residences to be, to be built. So that by itself is going to increase the tax base. Every, every vacant lot that you transform into a house increases the tax base. There is a proposal right now, one of the developers saying that this one I support. So I was against Nord, this one I support, and that is the, the island field development, where it was originally looked to have some commercial development there, a small shop strip center and some condominiums. The developer came back and said that they would like to make it all condominiums. There's been some, some discussion about what that ratio of development area to condominiums needs to be. That's under discussion. But I think that's a, I think that's a good move. And for these reasons, I think, one, do we want to put a strip center in the interior of North Oaks inviting lots of people that are not North Oaks residents into our streets? I think we respect their privacy too much to allow that. Small shop retail right now is not very favorable. I think it's difficult to get tenants, tenants. And if you can't get tenants, you sometimes are forced to get, to get lower quality tenants, making that, making that strip center perhaps not so successful. I'm a real estate developer myself, so I'm a little bit in tune to some of these things. I think that the condo swap-out for the commercial, I think is a good thing.
Thank you. Question goes to Nick Sandell.
I agree. As a planning commissioner, I've been supportive of the upcoming development, including the condominium project that has been, been discussed, as I think that will be a great growth in development for our community, and ultimately be very supportive of broadening our tax base. From a meeting that we've recently had on the planning commission, we understand that this condominium project alone can have significant impact on the tax base to North Oaks. And that positively impacts all of its residents, both from the perspective of potentially being able to lower taxes for individual residents as we look at what our needs are from a city and what our costs are from a city, and also allows us to give consideration to other initiatives that we potentially may have. So I am very in favor of a very responsible development approach that increases the tax base and still incorporates the values and traditions that North Oaks has been accustomed to. I don't think it has to be picked one way. I think that we can have a win-win solution with those, and I'd be very supportive of continuing those conversations.
Thank you. Additional comments, Jim?
Uh, yes, I would have. I think our city administrator made the comment at the last meeting that the North Oaks condo proposed project would double our tax base. I don't think that's exactly right. I did have somebody who does real estate taxes take a look at this, and it's a very complicated math involved in doing this, is more than just a simple value there. The one thing that is accurate is that the condo project is probably another 15 to 18 million dollars more real estate value than a strip center, but the impact on individual taxes is not going to be that significant.
Thank you. Any additional comments, Nick?
I think that the projects that are currently being discussed, specific to the condo project, is a great opportunity for us to increase the tax base without, in with also being able to balance some of the land usage issues and green space, green space issues that we've been discussing. So I think that there are some fantastic options out there where we can pursue increasing our tax base and also find a way that we preserve the natural landscape that we all love about North Oaks.
Thank you. We'll move on to the next question. It goes to you first, Nick. Do you think the city or the Ramsey County Sheriff's Department can or should do more to protect the safety, security, and privacy of North Oaks? If so, what would you suggest?
Well, this is a very important question. And as a father of two young boys, safety and security of our neighborhoods is of paramount importance to me. And I think that if I'm elected to the city council, this will be a specific topic that I will want to really spend a lot of time and energy working on. I'm fortunate that I think I'm uniquely positioned than other candidates in the sense that I come from a law enforcement background, with my father, the previous chief of police in the city of Richfield, and my brother, a current sergeant for the St. Paul Police Department, along with my sister-in-law as a police officer, and many uncles, cousins, and aunts. I understand the responsibility put on our law enforcement officers, and I fully support them. In addition to that, I'm uniquely positioned that I understand what kind of support they need. So I do feel confident that the Ramsey County Sheriff's Office can provide us with the safety and security that we need, but we need to make sure that we listen to them, and we need to make sure that we support them. I'm fully committed to that. And when we do that, and we have those conversations, we understand what our needs are from a law enforcement presence perspective and from a strategy perspective. And then also, how can we as citizens interact with our law enforcement officers to ensure that we have a holistic approach to community safety and community response? Our law enforcement officers would say that they can operate the best when they are governing with the citizens and when, when the citizens play an active role in getting to know the community. And I think I'm uniquely positioned to be able to represent us and be able to work with our law enforcement officers.
Thank you. The question goes to Jim Hara.
Uh, we are fortunate in the city of North Oaks that we have one of the lowest crime rates in Minnesota, and I think that goes back to many years. And I think part of that is the way our community has been designed. We have very limited entrances into the, into the, our, our community. We also have a very confusing road system, and we have no streetlights. So I think that is a deterrent to many people that would, would perhaps come here in the, in the cover of darkness. One, am I going to be able to get out? I might get lost. So I think Ramsey County does a great job. One of the things I think that we have done that is, that is a good thing, is we have a dedicated officer that patrols our streets. So Officer Burrell, who I think has been very effective, I think he takes the time to interact with people. And I think that interaction is very important and critical to having us feel good about his policing. I also think having the same person patrol our streets, three streets, day in and day out breeds a familiarity with what areas might have a potential for speeding or crime or something like that. So I think we're getting better policing from that. I do also think that Ramsey County has been very proactive in some of the training that they're doing in response to some of what we're seeing today in the news. Their crisis intervention training, they have mental health training, they have a number of escal, or de-escalation training. So their protocol for how they go about doing their job, which is a difficult job, has changed to be more reflective of what the needs of the community are.
Thank you. Nick?
You know, so-
Do you have any additional comments?
Since this is such an important topic, I do just want to reiterate that safety and security needs to be a primary focus for us as we protect our, as our residents, our neighbors, and our families. And our support for the Ramsey County Police Department or Sheriff's Office as they provide that safety and protection for us will be paramount, and the city needs to make sure that we represent it as such.
Additional comments, Jim?
Uh, yeah, I do. I do believe there's one thing that we do need to do. I think we need to have an emergency preparedness strategy and an executable plan. And what I mean by that is we need to look at potential issues that could arise that we perhaps have not contemplated in the past. And I think that needs to be involved with Ramsey County Sheriff, Lake Johanna Fire Department, maybe a protocol of how to get state resources dispatched, and maybe even public or federal resources. We saw what happened in City Minneapolis for their lack of planning, and it was not a good result. I think we can, we can be proactive and get that set up.
Thank you. We'll move on to the next question. It goes to you first, Jim. How well is the North Oak City Council engaging the community and incorporating its feedback into North Oaks plans? How would you improve this relationship?
Uh, okay, the city council, I don't think does a wonderful job. I think you'll see that every candidate's position statements reflect that there's an acknowledged need to be more open and transparent and welcoming of the citizen comments. I think that there's been a change over the years from where that was more valuable to where I think now it's a nuisance, viewed as somewhat times as a nuisance, and I don't know that they're actually heard. So I would encourage that a new city council not just allow for citizen comments, but actually listen to and hear what the comments are. And maybe I can encourage them to ask some questions to get a little better understanding of what the perspective of the citizens that we represent are. And that's actually one of the primary reasons I'm running for councils. I think we really need to improve that. After seeing many councils over the years, I think we're at perhaps a lower point this, and with this council in terms of being inviting and having, having citizens feel comfortable and respected in their views being shared.
Thank you. Question goes to Nick Sandell.
I think this is, again, a very important topic for our community and is consistent with a lot of the questions that we've heard already: transparency, openness, respect for the citizens' views. And I would support the city council to be very active and engaged with the community. And North Oaks offers a unique opportunity that not a lot of cities do. We are a municipality. We are a city. We have a, we have our protocols. But given our size and given the nature of our individuals and our citizens, we get to operate as much more of a neighborhood and community feel. And I think that that uniquely positions us as city officials to be out in the community more and active and engaged with residents, hearing firsthand what their feedback is, and being able to initiate ideas based off of those very active engagements. I think another important component of that is that we are listening to the entire city. And as we've been talking about new development, there are new neighborhoods within the city, and we need to make sure that they feel included in the conversations and the decisions that are made about our community. And I think I'm uniquely positioned to represent that, knowing that I actually live in one of the developments that was developed under the Plan Development Agreement, the East Oaks Plan Development Agreement, living in the Raff Farm neighborhood. And so I think that I have a unique position where I can engage all of the neighborhoods of the community and make sure that we operate and all of our voices are heard.
Thank you. Any additional comments, Jim?
Uh, yeah, I think I would make, make one. So the Raff Farm area, which is, which is a beautiful development with lots of young families, and it's fun to drive through that and see all the kids running around and having a good time. My daughter also lives in that community, and she was very active in the Nord development, as the Nord development is adjacent to Raff Farms and perhaps impacted them more than some of the other neighborhoods, particularly in the area of the trails. So I am very sensitive to including all of the areas in North Oaks, both the people who lived here for 30 or 40 years and people that have just moved in.
Thank you. Additional comments, Nick?
I think it's just important that we have a community full of generational families, which is fantastic. And I think some of our newer developments are going to observe that, and they're going to want to be generational families as well. So let's be sure that while we're making these decisions, we make sure that we think about it from the perspective of some of these new residents in some of these new communities, and see how decisions that we make now and today are going to impact those communities in the future.
Thank you. We'll move on to the next question. It goes to you first, Nick. How well do you think the city and North Oaks Homeowners Association work together? How can that relationship be improved?
Yeah, well, we talked about this a little bit when we talked about the unique structure that we have here in North Oaks. And, you know, the homeowners association in the, in the city definitely have a shared responsibility and a partnership that they need to maintain as they offer public services. And I think we can look that, look at that in two perspectives. I think from one lens, we can look at that as a huge advantage we have, is we have two entities that have very specialized expert experience in their respective fields. We can also look at that as a little bit of a challenge, as we have two entities that need to work together to make decisions on behalf of the city. In certain instances, there's overlap of resources, there's inefficient operations, and potentially any challenge you have with two, two entities or two individuals that are working together. So I think as a city council, we need to be very cognizant of the relationship that we have with the homeowners association. I think we need to be very mindful of what each one of our key responsibilities are, and how those responsibilities mesh together and interact together, and really find a way that we can have each one of us present, bring our expertise to the table, and then find the most efficient way and effective way to execute on that expertise to offer the greatest public service to all of our residents.
Thank you. The question goes to Nick Hara, or Jim Hara? Sorry?
Yeah, no worries. I think NOAA, again, we have a complicated government system where we have two bodies that, that collect revenue and, and also then spend revenue. I think NOAA is extremely proactive and does a great job with distributing surveys, and their budgeting process is one that is put forth well in advance and when the budget actually gets finalized, and they're very inviting of citizen comments. I'm not certain that the budgeting process with the city isn't quite as transparent as that. So I think there could be some improvement in the sharing of those systems or protocols of how that gets done. I do think that historically, NOAA and the city have had a reasonably good working relationship. I think there's room for improvement there. I do agree with Nick that there's a little bit of duplication, but not a great deal. I do think there could be some, some headway made simply by sitting down with the respective groups, collaborating, and then taking the citizen comments that they get and input, and, and looking at what are the people here looking to do? Where do they feel that we need to, to spend our money, and how can we best serve what the citizens are looking to get done?
Thank you. Any additional comments, Nick?
I would support any conversation, any additional conversations that NOAA and the city could have together, especially as it relates to the use of tax proceeds and, and association dues. I think that there's a lot of different areas where we could be more transparent to the community as to how those dollars are, are allocated from both an association and a city perspective. And having a much more collaborative and engaged relationship between those entities will make those conversations a lot easier.
Thank you. Anything else, Jim?
Uh, yeah, I would agree with the fact that I believe particularly the city budget is not as transparent as I'd like to see it. I'm accustomed to working with budgets, and a lot of the line items are a single word. That's difficult to be able to tell what exactly makes up that budget. So I would welcome a, an additional clarity into what we're spending our money on, so citizens can get an idea of what, what their tax dollars buy.
Thank you. We'll move on to the next question. It goes to you first, Jim. Do you see any issues or challenges in the current development application process?
I do. Here, here's where it starts from. So in 1999, there was a Plan Development Agreement that took a long time to get agreement on. And I think it was a, for the time, I think it was a very well, well put together document, and we got the developer to agree to it, the city to agree to it, and NOAA to agree to it. Since that 1999 development plan, we've had seven amendments. NOAA has not agreed to any of those amendments, which I think that in itself is somewhat telling. So the, the process now is, I think has been confused somewhat by some of the amendments. And if you read the amendments, they're not very clear. They create some ambiguities that did not exist quite to that level in the previous document. And I feel like we have maybe compromised the vision that the forefathers had back in the development of the 1999 PDA.
Thank you. Question goes to Nick Sandell.
Well, as a matter of just application process, I think that there are some administrative factors that we could streamline, that I would be supportive of, especially based off my experience on a planning commission with another city. We do have some archaic laws, one being that the planning commission itself needs to approve the completeness of an application as it comes in, which ultimately is a staff, as a staff role and responsibility, and ultimately kind of convolutes the process. I think that our goal should be to ensure that the application process is a very efficient process, and that it limits any like bureaucratic red tape that we might impose on the applicants. We have to really, as a community, look at development applications as a positive. These are individuals that are looking to invest in our community, and we have the controls in place to ensure that any type of development or investment in our community meets the very rigorous and demanding traditions and values that North Oaks has. We have those controls in place, and we have a community that is very respectful of that. But we need to make sure that we look at development as a positive thing, as individuals that want to invest in our community and want to be a part of this amazing city that has been created. And while I want to make sure that everybody needs to go through the very, the right way to do things and in a very responsible way, I want to make that process as efficient and effective for any development to occur.
Thank you. Any additional comments, Jim?
Uh, yeah, I do. I think that the process, at some times, particularly now, I believe that is hurried a little bit. And I think when we're talking about developments that are the last lands that are to be developed in the community, which would include trails and, and hopefully some recreation areas and things like that, that that process does not need to be sped up. I think it should be at a pace that everybody can get input and fully understand what this looks looks like for today as well as the future. And I think NOAA also has to be a part of that, since they're charged with maintaining some of these developments after the fact.
Thank you. Additional comments, Nick?
I think anytime that we're incorporating both the now and incorporating the future of North Oaks when we make these decisions regarding development applications is very important. And I think if we do it strategically now, we will be very well positioned to ensure that our legacy of North Oaks and our traditions of North Oaks are incorporated in future development and incorporated in the way that we continue to build out and grow this community and still respect the traditions and values that the city has.
Thank you. We're going to move on to the next question, and it goes to you first, Nick. What qualification do you think sets you the most apart from the others seeking this office?
I think that's probably one of the more important questions that we're going to have tonight. And, yeah, I'm definitely qualified for the role if you look at my 15 years of private leadership experience. If you look at my experience working on the North Oaks Planning Commission, being someone who has worked closely with the development and the comprehensive plan, I have the experience of working on a planning commission for another city where I've been able to observe how other cities go about their, their operations. And I can incorporate some of those experiences into what we have today. But I think maybe the most important qualification that I have is that for any governing body, whether it be a government entity, whether it be a private corporation or a nonprofit, it's important that we have a diversified governing body that represents all of its constituents. And I think that I'm unique, I'm a unique candidate, is that I am the only candidate that lives in one of the newer communities that was built under the East Oaks development. And I have a unique perspective of being able to have a strong appreciation for the viewpoints and the vision and the opinions that those residents have, ensuring that we, as a city council, are represented, representing our entire city. I think my strong values and my strong appreciation for the North Oaks traditions will allow me to be the best bridge for future residents and future families as we incorporate the legacy that North Oaks was built on and still meet the future demands for new families and new generations to come.
Thank you. Question goes to Jim Harrah.
I think what sets me apart is, one, length of time in the community. I've lived in this community for 30 years, so I've seen it grow. I've seen developments put forth and I see the results of these developments, and I've been pretty engaged. My father was heavily engaged in politics, so I've seen how this is, has transpired over the years, and I think that's given me a good perspective of how we got to where we are today. I think also my parents, my children, and my grandchildren live here, so I get a perspective of many different generations as to what they think's important in our community. I think my age, at, at 63, I have significantly more adult decision-making under my belt. If I look at my history of, of things, in your twenties, you make decisions that maybe sometimes you, you were not as well thought of you liked them to be. And as you get older, I think there's a maturity and a, a comprehension of what's important. And I think having 45 years of adult decision-making is a critical thing. My work experience, I have started and run two successful companies and run, I've been the CEO of these companies, companies, and it's a 35-year, year commitment with employees and working through a number of different business issues that we all face over time. And education, I've got an accounting degree, I'm an MBA in finance, and I'm a CPA, so I've got very good, good financial skills. And I think a budgeting process is important to residents. I think that's important to me, and I think I'm approachable, I'm pragmatic, and I possess a great deal of common sense.
Thank you. Could you, each of you answer very quickly in less than one minute why you chose to run for this two-year position instead of for one of the four-year positions? And we'll start with you, Jim.
I think the two-year position, I went back and forth, should I run for two years or one for, for four years? There are some other people in the community that are also running for the four-year position. I felt that a strong council would incorporate some of those people, and I thought a two-year position for me might be the best avenue at this point in time. I'm hoping I'm going to like it, I'm hoping to get elected, and I'm hoping to run again. So, but that was the, the, the thought process that went into the two-year position.
Thank you. Nick?
I think a very pragmatic approach to taking on different roles within the government is an important way, and I think that this two-year position allows me to introduce myself into the council. And I very much expect that I will, you know, if I'm elected, will want to continue to, to serve on additional terms after this. When I first joined the planning commission in the city of Little Canada, I joined that as a commissioner, and I learned, shortly after that, I was asked to be the vice chair of that commission so I could help lead some of those conversations and the recommendations we made. I quickly wanted, when I moved to the community, wanted to be involved in a leadership role with being on the planning commission. I think that I've continued to take a leadership role within that body as well. And I think that this step into this two-year position is just a great way for me to introduce myself into the city council, and I very, I fully expect that I want to continue to serve for years to come.
Thank you. We'll now move to our closing statements, and we'll go in the reverse order that we had opening statements, and we will start with Nick Sandell.
Great. Now, thank you again to the League of Women Voters for hosting and to all the North Oaks residents for watching. I think North Oaks is at an important time in its history as it navigates the new growth and development that we've discussed, and we work to ensure that that development is consistent with its traditional values. I will focus on a balanced strategy that follows the North Oaks traditions, as well as works to meet current market demands with a goal to preserve our community and increase property values. The safety and security of our neighborhoods must also be a top priority, and I will commit to fully supporting our Ramsey County Sheriff's Office to ensure that we have the necessary law enforcement presence and strategy to address today's key issues. I'm asking that you trust that I will work to ensure North Oaks continues to be a premier city and that the people of North Oaks are its greatest assets, and I look forward to being a part of this community for years to come. Thank you for your support in considering me and electing me as your next city council member.
Thank you. Now, with this closing statement, it's Jim Harrah.
Okay, again, thanks so much to the League for this opportunity. Appreciate your help in getting our messages out to the constituents. I've read every candidate's position statements for each office, and on the surface, many of them sound very similar. Before we part ways, I would like to share what makes me uniquely qualified as your council member. As I said earlier, I'm 63 years old, I've got 45 years of adult decision-making, I've learned a great deal, gained some hard-fought wisdom, and recognize that life, that learning is a lifelong process. I have and will continue to put in the time and care to understand the issues. I walk development sites and proposed trails. I willingly and respectfully talk to citizens to understand their perspective. I'm straightforward and have the courage to make tough decisions. As I said earlier, I have an accounting degree, I'm an MBA in finance, I'm a CPA, I've got a strong financial background. I've also got a leadership background in having successfully run companies for over 35 years. I know how to work with people to get the best results, and I'm very anxious to get your vote, and I would like you to consider voting for Jim Harrah. And if you want more information, visit my website, jimharrah.com. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, candidates, for coming forward to run and for speaking to the voters about issues. Thank you to our viewers for watching and for your interest in becoming informed voters. We will put all of our forms on our YouTube channel. You can find links to the recordings for all the candidate forms on the LWV White Bear Lake area website, which is llv-wbla.org. You can request an absentee ballot on the Secretary of State's website, which is minvotes.org. If you need to register to vote or update your registration, you can do that online or when you go to vote. Make your voice be heard in the general election by voting by November 3rd. Thank you.